Hello, this is Ashley Smith, the Mayor for Canyon City. I would like to call to order our regular city council meeting here for June 1st, 2020. I do recognize that we are having a hybrid meeting today. This is our first time for the city council members themselves to be meeting at the actual dais. It's a real pleasure to have everybody here. It's been awhile since the city council's been able to physically be in the same room. Although I will say that we are social-distanced. We measured it and everything. We are, we have less than 10 people in the room. We are not wearing our masks at this time. It's for ADA purposes, for the hearing impaired. And so that we can all understand each other properly and well. I also want to point out that this is still a public meeting. Those on Zoom will be our attorneys, as well as those who are participating in our meeting today. And that we can still take public comment. And so there was posted on our meeting, the contact information for public comment. We also have this on Facebook Live. And we will be monitoring that as well. There's an ability to call in. And we are happy and welcoming that information, or for that public comment. This is a public meeting, and we're doing our best to get it out to everybody. I think it's also important, I just wanna, just have a quick moment to acknowledge the turmoil in our country right now. Not just with, still trying to get through COVID-19, but also with the terrible tragedy with Mr. Floyd. And that our nation is in turmoil, and with a need to voice for further policy reforms. I've had a few people call and ask if our Canyon City Police Department, if they are trained in de-escalation. And I do want our residents to know that our CCPD is trained in de-escalation, both one-on-one and then with large groups. They have the equipment that they need. The most important part of de-escalation, though, is stopping the need to riot before it happens. And so that is providing a safe and a good place for those who need to voice their opinions and protest, to do so peacefully, and to have their First Amendment rights. And let them express that in a way that doesn't incite violence. And they're very aware of that, and respectful of that duty. To respect those First Amendment rights, as well as their duty to protect the safety of all people and private property. I also want to acknowledge that in the first, probably the first time in the history of Canyon City, our police department has the highest ratio of diversity. We have a number of African-Americans, Latino, and Philippine, and four women officers as well. And that diversity is a huge asset to Canyon City, to have that diversity of opinions and backgrounds and suggestions for policy changes. And demonstrates Canyon City's forward movement in embracing all cultures and ethnicities. And so I really appreciate that aspect of Canyon City, and also that during this time, it's become apparent that we've really come together in solidarity against injustice, and a desire to be inclusive to all people. And I'm thankful for that peaceful way of asking us to love, to love one another during these hard times, and to move forward in better ways. With that, I will call this meeting to order, please.
Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Gonzalez, absent. Councilmember Haquez-
Present.
Councilmember Meisner-
Here.
Councilmember Reed-
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith-
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick-
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. We'll now all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the good republic on which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Again, it's just a real pleasure to be here with the city council, all in person. We are in really good hands with your elected officials. They have such a good heart, and care considerably for our residents and our businesses alike, especially during these hard times. I appreciate their efforts and support. Cindy, are there any requests to address council today?
Not yet, at this time.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move ahead, if there are any council member announcements. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would point out that we have a general committee, a general government committee meeting, this Wednesday, June 3rd, at 5:00 PM. It will be the similar arrangement, is that correct?
That is correct. We'll be doing a hybrid model as well.
A hybrid Zoom and in-person. And we're gonna, excuse me, talking the Rhodes Avenue Stormwater Project.
That's correct.
Any other announcements or comments from the city council at this time? Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I just wanted to take the opportunity to just be able to let all of the businesses know that we really appreciate them working with us during these hard times. It has not been an easy feat on either side of things. And so I just wanted to continue to say, if there are still questions, please continue to reach out to all of us during these times. Things are changing rapidly in some particular areas. I don't feel like they're changing rapidly enough. I know I share that sentiment with a lot of other business owners. So I just wanted to remind everybody that we are genuinely here to be able to listen to you and help you, and come alongside you however we can. So again, this is just a reach-out. If you have questions for us, we don't have all the answers, but please do, on this Facebook Live, add some questions on there, or continue to reach out to Ryan or Rick at the city, because we definitely wanna help. And so I've heard some really creative ideas this week that other businesses have had. And so I think sharing those ideas and things like that is really important. So I just wanted to say again that we are here for you, even though we haven't been able to see you. So just wanted to share that reminder.
Any other comments from council? Okay, then I will invite our Administrator, Ryan Stevens, to go over the agenda, consent agenda, please.
Mayor and Members of Council, Consent Item 6A is the approval of regular city council meeting minutes for May 18th, the Vision Committee meeting minutes for May 20th, and the Special City Council meeting on May 13th. 6B authorizes the city administrator to sign a licensing and professional services contract with Buxton Company for $50,000 per year. 6C is a memo of understanding with the Downtown Colorado, Inc. organization. 6D ratifies the mayor's signature on the IGA Amendment Number 3 for the CDOT contract for the US 50 pedestrian crossing study and design. And 6E is to receive and file a list of bills.
Any questions for Ryan Stevens? Or comments? Okay, Councilmember Meisner.
The pedestrian crossing, we're just extending that?
That, that is correct.
For how long?
I believe...
I mean, when's, that's almost starting to make me feel like it's a sign. It's been going longer than the signs.
The wayfinding signs?
I blame you.
The wayfinding signs?
I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying that-
Yeah, so, so this is an extension of the design, again, and a lot of these state contracts, we do have to extend over and over again. But this is not, this is not because of the work with the engineering company. This is extending the grant funds.
Is there progress moving forward with the engineering company?
There is. So we, we are seeing progress, and I believe this is, yeah. We are seeing progress. They were actually out there today, walking the, walking Highway 50, and working with Wilson Company for that, you know, next, next steps in the pedestrian crossing.
Councilmember Meisner.
But with COVID, what kind of complications are we talking about with those initial open sessions relative to the design? Because as I understood it, the previous sessions, they really didn't wanna touch on the pedestrian crossing, because it was, it was more specifically access, and they didn't wanna cloud the waters.
Right, yeah, so those are, those are separate issues. One, you know, the access control study and the pedestrian crossing study are two, two separate. So we are continuing to wait for those group sizes to get larger, so we can have some of those open sessions in the future. And that's, that's not just related to this, that's, that's gonna be related to our comprehensive plan, and some of those open sessions and public engagement opportunities for that as well. So, you know, if, if we continue to see smaller group sizes, we're gonna have to get creative in how we're gonna do in public engagement, and get feedback from the public.
Mayor and Council, what I don't wanna see is a situation where in six months, or whatever, we have a plan put before us, and it's like, well, we can't back up now, because the plan's done, and we couldn't meet because of COVID. There needs to be that proactive discussion with those property owners beforehand, not after the fact.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, it's on public record now, so we'll, we will hold that. You and the company accountable for-
Yeah, you know, I think, you know-
I'm not worried about Ryan.
Especially these public processes, you know, it is kind of learning a new way to operate under the current COVID circumstances. And that is, I think everybody's having to adapt, and that, that includes us as the city in how we do our business.
You know, maybe a running display, like a, like a kiosk, but something here that's, that's got an ongoing display, that people can come in and just can watch, in terms of some of those anticipated things that we would normally have in a, in a public meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I know with the comprehensive plan, public outreach, we're, we're looking at all kinds of different ways to engage the public, and coming up with alternatives, you know, assuming the group sizes don't get larger soon.
Absolutely. Any other comments from council? I do wanna recognize that Rick Harmon, our Economic Development Manager, is on Zoom, as well as Chris from Texas, who's representing Buxton Company. A lot of our council members were not able to participate in our General Government or Vision Committee about Buxton Services. And for the benefit of the public, and also for our council members that couldn't be there, I'd just like them to be able to kinda give a word or two about the, the Buxton Services, and what it can provide for Canyon City. I know this is something I'm excited about, I've been hoping for, for over four years, and we actually need it now, even more than ever, that we're having to get through COVID and a potential recession. So I'd like, if that's okay, just turn some time to you, Rick, and Chris both, to address us, and if we have questions to ask.
Hey, Madam Mayor, thank you. This is an opportunity that, that presented itself, obviously, when I started, and Chris is, Chris is the person, well, Ryan and Chris are the people behind it, really.
Ryan, can you speak a little bit more in your microphone? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Sure. Is that better?
Not really.
A little.
Is that any better? How about this?
Yeah, you're good now. Thank you.
All right, good. Well, we, we have an opportunity to use a product, use a service, that will help businesses understand why people come to Canyon City, why they don't come to Canyon City, why they go elsewhere to shop, and why they come here to shop, and maybe what businesses could focus on selling, or services could provide, in order to attract people to the area. We spoke with, with Buxton, I also spoke with another retail analytics company, and Buxton by far has the data in a format that we really like. It's, it's, it's data that we can share with businesses to some extent, or share with industry groups, and help them focus as industries on what will attract people here. So we've got a really good opportunity here. Chris has been really helpful, helping us understand how this all works, and showing us, very patiently, actually, taking us step-by-step through everything. The product is an amazing product. It's, it's somewhat scary, because it's Big Brother kind of information. But if we use it properly, you know, we only get information that we can use for marketing and research purposes. But if we use it properly, we will really be able to help position Canyon City in competition with other communities. I look at it in a number of different ways. We can recover, help our businesses recover now, and we can also use this information to help attract other businesses to the area as well. And that, that's much more long-term than any other type of service that we can provide right now for our businesses. So it's pretty exciting. So Chris, I'll let you take over, and give a few sense of, of your knowledge.
Thank you, Rick, and again, thank you so much, Council, for having me in tonight's meeting. First off, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Yes, I've had the opportunity to speak with Ryan and Rick over the past few months, and Ryan's very familiar with us here at Buxton over the years, and has leveraged us in a past relationship, or a past community, and had the pleasure in showing Rick and Ryan the technology and the type of data that local leaders could access. And when we talk about data, we're leveraging the right answers and granular data to help local leaders and local businesses to better understand the citizens, as Rick mentioned, where citizens are going to get their goods and services, who are the type of visitors that come into Canyon City, what are they doing, how long are they staying, what businesses are they going into. So a number of different data sets that we can leverage to really help Canyon City's local leaders and local businesses to be in a better position for economic development growth. And the beauty of our solutions here at Buxton, we have the capabilities to not only focus on retail development, but as Mayor Smith mentioned in our previous meeting, in the Vision Meeting on May 20th, where we help diversify the economic development opportunities there in Canyon City, and focus not only on retail development, but also healthcare, workforce, attracting more tourism into the economy. So our solutions here at Buxton, yes, it is Big Brother, and it's scary information, but we are able to take all of this data and create actionable solutions and answers to really position local leaders for that economic development growth, and helping local businesses to really have a better understanding of who their core customers are in the region. How can they better understand these customers, to attract them into their doors, keep their doors open, and for entrepreneurs that are looking to start businesses there in Canyon City? What are those businesses that we see that the market needs, and what do citizens and visitors want to see there in the market? So a number of different answers, and being able to leverage the data, the tools, and the account management and support that our partnership is looking to provide, and really position Canyon City in a very competitive advantage over other folks in the region. So I'm excited to be here to answer some more questions that council members, you all may have. I hope folks have had the opportunity to watch the previous meeting. I know we had an opportunity to dive into a little bit more detail of the actual solution, and jump into the, some of the different tools that you all will have access to. But with that being said, I'd love to take this opportunity to answer any questions that council members may have, or discuss anything in more detail.
Any questions? I see Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. I don't know whether Ryan or Chris, who's, who's appropriate to answer, but, but, you know, as part of this effort, you know, one of the things that I've been concerned about is that, is that Canyon City may not be receiving its fair share of online sales taxes. And so I would just, I don't know if the data that, that, that will be collected will allow us to look at that, but I would just ask that Ryan, as, as we go through this process, if there's an opportunity to be able to make this dub, this data double-hit, you know, maybe to fulfill both purposes that we've got here, which is to assist our businesses, but also to look at our sales tax collections, that you take that opportunity if it presents itself.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let Chris talk to, to the Buxton piece. I, you know, that's a good question. But for, for council's purposes, we had a discussion probably a month or so ago about state-collected versus self-collected, and, you know, what that looks like from an online sales tax standpoint. And we're still continuing to do that analysis of self-collection and, versus state-collection, and whether or not that will benefit us from an online sales tax standpoint.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
I'm not sure if this question would, I'm not sure if it would be Ryan or Rick, but how do we plan, I watched the video, because I did miss the last meeting, to distribute this information, or help local businesses utilize this? What I'm really excited for, really excited for this to come aboard, hopefully. But I'm, how do we do that? How are we going to give the information to businesses?
Yeah, so, you know, I'll go ahead and answer, and Rick, if you wanna jump in, you know, feel free. Rick has started these industry groups, and I think that, that's the place to start, as far as getting that information out to the different businesses. You know, we've also have that Main Street Program Manager position that we have not hired yet, that would be more of the boots-on-the-ground every day. This is how you, how you use it. You know, as, as well as Rick using that information on a daily basis, and getting it out to the business owners, to help them with their, their process. I think the, the other part of it is enlisting some of our business partners, like the Chamber of Commerce, and even Fremont County Tourism Council, to try and push this information and data out to a lot of our tourism companies as well. So I think there's, there's many different ways to get that information out into the business's hands.
One of the things that excites me most about it is that this is technology that business owners everywhere have known, has existed, but frankly, haven't been able to afford to be able to put in place. So I think that this will be something that is gonna be amazing for us to understand what's going on in our town.
Absolutely. It levels the playing field against some of those big-box stores, and even the online retailers who use analytics in everything they do.
Chris, are there specific industries that are in this breakdown that we're looking at, or is it all industries? Can you tell me more about how you kind of identify what areas that we're looking at?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman. The main focus for us is retail development, and as I mentioned, we have the opportunities with our solution to focus on other areas in economic development, such as healthcare, tourism, primary jobs. But with retail development, and our niche the last two decades, is really helping communities to identify what type of retail development would be the best fit for their market. So we take a deep-dive approach in understanding what is going on, on the ground, from a data standpoint, understanding customers, the drive time trader, and a number of different economic conditions, and, and matching Canyon City's unique market to what type of retailers are looking for those types of markets, and, and are currently located in those types of markets. So retail recruitment is definitely one of those focuses for us, but also as equally important, you know, helping the local businesses with their retail development growth right there in Canyon City today. So the niche is retail development, but the, the other focus is in economic development opportunities. One of the components in the partnership is helping identify a hospitality concept. So hospitality is one of those focuses as well, that we can identify what hospitality brand, is it a Marriott, is it a Hilton, that would be a good fit for Canyon City today, and help break Ryan and other local leaders to go out and attract that type of hospitality. With primary jobs, we can do a deep-dive analysis to really understand where folks are coming from, from a labor shed standpoint, and, and help attract more workers into Canyon City. So there's a number of different areas that we can work on, but as far as industry, as you, as you asked, retail development is one of those number-one industries. Hospitality is a solution that's built into the partnership, and, and primary jobs is one of those industries that we'll be focused on heavily as well.
And healthcare as well, correct, Chris?
Correct. The capabilities, when the tools, within the tools allows us to better identify some of the gaps in the market, from a healthcare standpoint. Where do we see folks leaving to get some of those healthcare needs, and creating the market validation necessary to go out and speak to some of those physicians and those, those doctors, whatever that looks like from a healthcare standpoint, to get them to locate into your market.
Okay, we have a question from Councilmember Smith.
I just kinda wanted to piggyback off of what Mandy said, and, and how exciting it is to see something like this come to Canyon City. Because in this data and this analytics is gonna put us into a different bracket for the future. The bigger cities are using it, bigger companies are using it, and I think sometimes in small business, it, it's unaffordable for most business owners to, to gather this kind of data. And there's, there's multiple campaigns and advertisement and, and online apps and that, that they can use, but they, they just don't ever have access to this kind of data. And I think that this is, is definitely a step forward for Canyon City.
Yeah, I would like to expand on that. I look at this as, as being beneficial in a number of different ways. One is obviously to help our local businesses, but another is, is to help Canyon City compete with other communities. You know, if we wanna diversify our economy, not rely on tourism as much, which is a huge part of our existence, then we need to be able to compete with other communities for the businesses, the industries that we want to attract here. They're, they are using this type of information, or they're using services that provide this type of service. And in order to, for us to really be able to attract businesses, we need to dot our i's and cross our t's. And this is one of those pieces that is, I believe is really essential to succeed with development. For, kinda piggybacking on that, when I moved here, back in 2015, I started to develop relationships with a lot of business owners, and got to know a lot of people pretty quickly. And one of the big comments that was made is, from retailers in particular, is like, we don't know what, they basically didn't know what people were buying. They didn't know what to sell, because what would bring people here? Maybe we should try this, maybe we should try this. This is a really good way to target exactly what people are buying. We're gonna know what stores people are walking into, what, maybe not exactly what they're buying in those stores, but we're, there's a real trend, a real behavioral analysis that happens when you look at this data. It's really amazing stuff, so I agree. I agree, it's, it's, it's competition, really, with other communities.
Councilmember Haquez.
My question, my question is gonna be this, and you brought up some of the points with, Rick, when you mentioned here, but when you started doing your, your surveys to look at what can come, and what's beneficial, and everything else, did you also look into, because we've had several businesses that came, opened their doors, closed their doors, another one opened the doors and closed the doors. So did you look at those businesses that came, that opened their doors, and then the type of product that they were bringing to the town, and then later on, closed their doors? When you're looking at, what do you wanna bring in here, so that once they open their doors, hopefully, they'll stay open longer than some of the other businesses that we've had come here? Because very few businesses that have come to Canyon City, with the exception of the few, stay very long. It's like an open and closed door type of situation. So I would hope what you folks are doing, you'll take that into consideration when you look at somebody coming. I'd hate to have somebody come here and say, okay, you sold me on Canyon City, I'm here, and they open the door, and then six months later, two months, or two years later, the doors are closed.
Yeah, it's, it's, the data's pretty amazing, as far as analyzing past stores and what they were selling. It's, that's, that's more along the lines of local knowledge, I guess you could say. The data won't give us what people were trying to sell years ago, but, but it will tell us exactly why people are leaving our area to buy stuff, you know, and what they're buying. And that, that's pretty amazing. It's really powerful in that respect. And, you know, you can actually take a look at, let's say we've got tourists coming from Missouri, or Texas, or Florida. If you wanted to, you could take a granular look at who those people are, and where they shop, and when they're here, when they're on vacation, what would they be looking for? Now, so you can actually kind of take your market, your economy, and make it more of a controlled seasonal economy. Retailers could sell what tourists wanna see in the summertime, and then they could maybe hold off on spending on, you know, the money on the human- maybe hold off on spending on, you know, the money on inventory for that during the non-tourist season. So it's a lot more in-depth, I guess you could say, when it comes to planning, product purchasing, and product selling. So as far as the historic data, really it's going to be a matter of what we know that didn't work in the past. The data won't necessarily give us that, but it does tell us right now what people are buying where and why they're not coming here.
And Councilman Hacquez.
And I would like to, I would like to quickly add to Rick's statement. Councilman Hacquez, that is a very great point that you bring up, and I do like to, I would like to add that that is one of the primary reasons that we began working with communities almost two decades ago. We want to help local leaders and communities to leverage the right data to do exactly the opposite of what you mentioned. We do not want an entrepreneur or a local business to come into Canyon City and only have their doors open for eight to 12 months, and then a new business comes in and they also experience the same thing eight to 12 months, because they did not have the information needed or the market validation about not only the citizens, but the visitors coming into the market, to Rick's point. So our solution in our partnership will give up local leaders and local businesses that we are looking to attract and entrepreneurs that we speak with about the market's potential. We have the capability to take that deep-dive approach and really prepare and understand who are the best retailers? What do we see that our citizens and our visitors are wanting and needing to see here in Canyon City? Where are they going to get some of those goods and services that the community currently does not offer? So with our solution, we can take that deep-dive approach and be prepared to speak to the right retailer, so that way those doors remain open for years to come rather than closing their doors eight to 12 months, because they do not have the proper data on the front end to determine what type of store would be successful there in the market.
And Councilman Hacquez, just as a practical example, a real-life example that's happening right now, we have the Boat Barn Bagel Company that's going to be opening on Main Street next week. Had we had a solution like this in place when she initially came to the city and asked, you know, do you think this is a good idea? What, you know, do you think it's going to be successful, or do you think there's a market here for this? Rather than anecdotally saying, yeah, you know, I've heard a lot of people ask for bagels, we could actually go to some hard data and actually say, you know, this, you know, appears the market's going to be about this size, and we can actually enlist Buxton to help provide some of that insight directly to the entrepreneur.
Well, and also marketing access and marketing that hasn't been available before, so we can reach the right audiences in the right way.
Absolutely.
It's an incredible resource, and also find gaps in our economy of businesses that we are in need here and that there's a demand for, and we can reach out and bring them to Canyon City and invite them to Canyon City. And it's all the way around, it's pretty exciting, even for Councilmember Meisner's need of, you know, do trails bring people in? We can actually geofence those trailheads and find out where, who's using our trails, and where do they go when they're done with our trails? And there's just tons of data, data-driven and science that we can use to be successful.
Touche.
You asked and you shall receive, sir.
Hey, I mean, if that, which, the information that I saw, I mean, if we can collect that information and show that, then all of a sudden, that whole process makes sense.
I do have a question. On the second page on step four, on matching retailers, it says Canyon City will designate one of their four sites each year for the agreement for a match analysis. So what does that mean? We have four potential sites we want to find industry for, and they'll take care of one of them?
Actually, I believe that means that we have, what, four licenses, Chris? Is that?
Well, with that, with that particular step there that Mayor Smith is referring to, we want to look at multiple areas within Canyon City, whether that be the corridor, whether that be downtown, and we want to focus our efforts. And, you know, we have the capabilities to split the number of retailers that we matched to a specific area in Canyon City, as I mentioned, whether it's downtown, the corridor, because obviously, you know, the retailers that we've identified for downtown is going to be a little bit different from the retailers that we would match from the corridor. So we would, account management team will have a conversation, multiple conversations with local leaders to determine what areas in the market are we focusing on bringing those specific retailers to, and whether do we want to divvy up the number of retailers that we've identified and want to build the pursuit packages to go out and attract for that specific area? Because we do want our focus to be targeted, so when we're out speaking to a specific retailer, we want to show them a specific intersection of vacancy and available land that, hey, we want you guys to locate in this specific area. But that's not to say that the market, they can still look at different areas within the market as well.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from council? All right, my just final comment is, you know, this week has been really exciting that SpaceX and Tesla's been sending and preparing humans for space travel. And almost as, almost as a significant an event for Canyon City to have this opportunity to have this Buxton study as far as expediting our economic development potential for retaining businesses, supporting our current businesses, and bringing new businesses in, among many, many, many other opportunities. So, super excited for this. One other thing I did want to mention on our consent agenda is our agreement with Downtown Colorado, Inc. We are one of their challenge studios this year that we were chosen. I am so incredibly grateful that we were chosen this year to be DCI's challenge studio. It means that we have access to their mentorship and professional resources for the entire year. When COVID hit, I was pretty much a brand spanking new mayor, had a brand-new administrator. Rick Harmon was in the process of getting hired, and I went straight to DCI and said, can you please help us? What do I do? And they immediately taught, you know, this is how you set up a task force. Here's other cities and this is what they're doing. Here's some templates. Here, you know, and they attended the meetings and they mentored, and they have been walking already by our side, even above and beyond what our agreement is about. And I'm really excited that they'll still be here with us for the rest of the year. It's been a huge comfort to have that resource from Downtown Colorado for all of Canyon City during this time. If there are any other questions about the consent agenda, then I will entertain a motion.
One of us.
Just go for it, Mayor Protem.
Okay, Madam Mayor. I move, we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hacquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Rick and Chris, for being here with us tonight. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll now have our administrators.
Have a great evening.
Mayor and members of council, go through the administrative report. I'm not going to touch on every single object, item here, but, you know, do want to point out, you know, and thank council again for helping us approve the change to the contractor licensing that was, went into effect last week. We had contractors waiting to apply for additional licenses.
Really?
They were very excited to see those changes, so thank you again for helping us with that. The police department, we received the resignation of Commander Tracy Swearengen. We want to thank Tracy for his service to the Canyon City Police Department while he was here. But we also want to congratulate Steve Husky, who has been promoted to commander, and Chase Leonard, who's been promoted to replace Commander Husky's vacant position as sergeant. We still have a crime analyst position vacant and doing recruitment for that. From a sales tax standpoint, in March, we saw sales tax up about 4.8%. In April, we saw that sales tax was down about 5.5%. Those aren't finalized numbers yet for April. We still had a couple of online returns that were coming in, but it is looking like we'll probably be down somewhere in that 5% range for April. We have put on hold a lot of our capital projects and projects that have not been approved in anticipation of a down budget year, and we're continuing to monitor that on a everyday The Eighth and, Eighth Street and Bridge paving project that was awarded, that's going to be starting at the beginning of July. We are continuing the implementation of paylocity, which will help with the Human Resources Department, both our recruitment and onboarding efforts, as well as payroll and other activities. Has a self-service module, so employees can update their own benefits and not necessarily have to go directly to HR for that information. At this point, I'd ask for any questions regarding the administrative report.
Ryan, I noticed a comment on the Facebook feed. I usually don't, you know, usually it's not always appropriate to bring it up during the council meetings, it's not a public record inquiry, but I think it's an important one. And that is, what are we doing to address protests in Canyon City? And I kind of touched on it lightly in the beginning of this meeting, but that, maybe you want to enlighten, that we are aware, we're monitoring?
We are. You know, so we have both the city's Public Information Officer, Kristi Gotham, and the police department also has their Public Information Officer, as well as crime analysts. We have a lot of people, you know, looking out to, you know, make sure that we're aware if there is going to be a protest, so we can react appropriately. You know, the goal, of course, is to de-escalate those types of circumstances and, you know, encourage, you know, peaceful protests. You know, we, you know, it's our responsibility to protect those First Amendment rights, and we want, we want to do that. But, you know, also recognizing that those First Amendment rights go around peaceful protests, not necessarily taking away rights from other people. So we are monitoring those situations very closely. Police Department, as the chief stated earlier today on KLN, for those who listened, you know, they do have training in de-escalation methods, but we are, you know, we're being very diligent about monitoring those situations.
Yes, and I think that's important. I've, and I've received some messages from business owners in Canyon, wondering if they needed to border up their windows, and we, they are monitoring closely and in close contact, not just, you know, through social media and such, but also nearby communities. If there were problems, we have the State Patrol, we have the Sheriff's Office, we have other cities that can be here if we need it. Fortunately, at this time, we're doing really well. We do seem to be coming together in the right ways. Florence did have their protest this afternoon, from what I understand, there was about 20, 25 people who attended. It was peaceful, it was respectful. It was going to be downtown Florence, but they ended up inviting, the police department invited them to come protest at City Hall, because it would be safer and it would put the business owners a little bit more at ease, knowing that it wasn't on Main Street. And also the police officers, they wanted to send a message too, that they're also upset by what happened. And so we're just trying to be really proactive and hearing those voices and letting it be done well. And we are very closely watching for the safety of all people during this tumultuous time, and grateful for patience, and I'm praying for healing and peace for our nation. With that, is there any other questions for Ryan Stevens at this time? And we'll go ahead and move into our discussion, item number eight, the inclusion of Custer County to the Regional Emergency Communications Authority.
Custer County wishes to join the Regional Emergency Communications Authority as a member, and according to our intergovernmental agreements that formed the authority originally, member organizations, and we are a member organization, must vote to add a new member to the authority. City Attorney Sellers, is there anything you would add to that?
We can't hear you, Catherine.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
No, that pretty much covers it. Custer has been operating on a temporary agreement with the authority, and so this is just to make that membership permanent, or I guess more formal. And then, just, if it's okay, Mayor, I can go ahead and discuss item B as well, since they're related.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so item 8B is the approval of the restated intergovernmental agreement that established the CRCA. This amendment includes revisions to include Custer County to the agreement, and also cleans up several provisions that are just outdated, that dealt with the creation of the authority and the joining of staff that are no longer needed. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council members? If, I do want to recognize Mayor Protem Hamrick, that you've been really involved in this process and with the dispatch center as well, and thank you for representing Canyon City on that.
You're welcome, and I was glad to do it. And I have been closely monitoring what, you know, what has been going on and what the need is, and what the fix is, and this is, this is the fix for us tonight, to formally approve Custer County as a belonging to our dispatch area, and to revise the intergovernmental agreement.
And with that, I would like to entertain a motion for item A. Councilmember Hamrick.
She looked at you. That's what I thought, but, um, Madam.
This is what I do to my children all the time, I'm so sorry.
Madam Mayor and council, I move that council approve. Did we just comment this agreement for? The addition of Custer County. The addition of Custer County to the Regional Communication Center IG agreement.
Second.
So there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Can I call for a vote? Go ahead, Mayor.
I just, so that the public understands, just because the council approves that doesn't mean that it happens. It's each of the, whatever those parties are that are part of the Communications Authority, each one of those voting members has to approve that. So it's not an exclusive vote just for the council.
Okay, call for vote, please.
Councilmember Hacquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
The motion carries. I would now like to entertain item B for the approval of the restated intergovernmental agreement. And maybe Mayor Protem Hamrick for reals would like to do this one.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mayor and council, I move that we approve the restated intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of the Regional Emergency Communications Authority as presented in our packets.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? And I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Hacquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
The motion carries. And that's everything on our agenda, unless there's any final words from the council members or staff.
Words of wisdom.
Just words of wisdom is be safe, be careful, and we're here for you. Please let us know what we can do, and let's pray for healing for our nation, both emotionally and physically, and both for COVID, and on behalf of Mr. Floyd's injustices. And with that, I adjourn this meeting.